Okay, what we have today on the workshop is a presentation from Karen and Wendy, recommendations they have for establishing the 2025 Plan Committees and how they will function and what they would be made up of and what their target objectives might look like and most importantly, the topics that they might be attempting to cover. So they've got a brief PowerPoint, I don't know which one of you guys is going to take the lead, but go ahead and start walking them through it.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Our objective tonight is, I wanted to give you all just a brief summary, just to get everybody up to speed of what we've been working on the last several months, and then Karen's going to go into more specifics on how we want to structure the committees. If you recall, we started this back in April, and we met with all the departments in, at the city, every single department, and got a lot of information from them, just in terms of what they would like to see from all the departments. And then June 4th, we kicked off our big ideas extravaganza, and we focused this idea on big ideas for that very reason. We wanted people to think futuristic, not the types of problems that we would face tomorrow, but those that really, what we envisioned Louisville to be in the future. We had great attendance at that. You can see on, up here on the slide, just the number of attendees. We had all kinds of different breakout sessions. What you see in front of you, what you have a hard copy of, is just a summary of those, of that process. We had a day-long workshop, we had different stations set up where people could give us input on various topics, be it Old Town, I-35, Parks and Rec, City Facilities, and so on. We also had a couple of different breakout sessions where we were able to give input. So this summary, if you weren't able to attend any of those meetings, this summary gives a very good overview of all the different activities that took place. The first meeting, we had 150 attendees, we then had one at the senior center, we had another 60 attendees at that one, and you can get a feel for the different activities in terms of the stations and the input that we got from that. Then we had another session in July, and we had about 40 attendees there. Alongside the different meetings that we've had, we've also had various ways for people to give their input through social media, which we've got a lot of comments to that. We've had an online survey where people have been able to give us a web survey, so in cases, they printed that out and returned that to us. We got all kinds of comment sheets at the meetings. We've had a website where people can go onto the website and just send us a comment on that, so we've been filtering through all that information. So to date, we've had almost 1,500 comments so far in ideas, and many of those are fantastic ideas. We also had a summary that looks like this, we did not print this out for everybody, but I think, believe everyone got a link to it. And it is all the different ideas summarized of all the data that was actually presented. So if you want to see the comments and some of that information, then you can look through this summary that we've tried to summarize everything. If that's not enough for you, then we have this, and that is like, this is all the real data of all the different questionnaires and the input and everything that we've got. So we're very, very pleased, I have to give kudos to all the city staff because they have been fantastic in helping us get all this, and we're still seeing ideas come. So I anticipate this number will continue to grow, and we'll mesh those into where we're working, where we're going forward. Now I'm going to let Karen spend a few minutes and talk about how we think this committee should be structured.
Thanks, Wendy. It was really exciting to see the range of comments and the amount of interest and enthusiasm that we saw and heard at the different big idea workshops and sessions, and also to see the comments that we heard from people online. And so what we'd like to now talk to you about is where we see the next steps in this process going, so that we can benefit from all of those ideas and continue to really look at the big ideas that are going to really put Louisville ahead of the curve as we look ahead to the future. The topics that are on this slide here are the range of things that we ask people about at the big idea sessions, and some of those topics, mobility, obviously, that has a lot to do with the regular kinds of transportation concerns. So these are somewhat a traditional kind of grouping, though we did ask people about things like Imagine Your Vision, which gave us a chance to hear from people in ways that was not just departmental or institutional kinds of silos. As we go forward, the next step in the process is to convene a set of committees of citizens to help sift through the ideas that we've heard and to help come up with recommendations of the vision statements and action ideas and recommendations that will really become the meat of the plan document that we're working on. And based on what we heard at those sessions and what we have seen in the analysis that we've done, we're suggesting an approach that is outlined here, and I want to use a couple of slides to describe the idea that we have and the approach that we, that we think is going to be one that will be both very creative and also very practical in terms of getting results and getting people engaged in a way that's different than what they might have been used to in the past. As we heard from people at all of these different sessions, we got a lot of ideas about the kind of character that they would like to see in Louisville in the future. And so the key, the first point that we've made here is that we think that committees should focus on different aspects of the character that people want to see in the future of Louisville. And this, in real reality, comes down to being interdisciplinary issues, so it's breaking down those more traditional silos. So that rather than having one group look at housing, and one group look at transportation, and one group look at parks, or something of that line, we're suggesting that the groups should really take an interdisciplinary look, because that's the way that we're going to really create the kinds of opportunities that Louisville can take advantage of. It is also very important to note that the committee should build on the work that's been done recently at all of the sessions. We had highlights of the really good plans that have been worked on in this community. And so we see this as building on those, not going back and revisiting those again. And we want to emphasize that the committees will be asked to help us with implementation priorities. We're not asking them just to come up with more platitudes about, we ought to think about such and such issue, but rather, we want their feedback, we want them to help set the stage for priorities for action. And then we also recognize that they'll need to interact across committees as they go through the process. So with that kind of general introduction about our approach, what we're suggesting are organizing four committees and using the topics that you see here, which are really based on the kind of character, the qualities and the visions that we heard from the folks in the Louisville community in the course of all of the outreach and all the meetings that Wendy was just describing. And I'm going to talk about each one of these in the course of the next couple of slides. And I want to use just one example here. When we did all of those workshops, one of the topics that got lots and lots of ideas was Parks and Recreation. And Parks and Recreation has done a lot of good work, they've got a lot of really good plans, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel and go back and do yet another plan for the same set of responsibilities that, that you already have good work for. So let me use them as an example, as I talk about how we see these four committees operating. The first committee would be Ideas on Diversity, and what you see in that first bullet is an initial statement of the vision that we think that we've heard from the community that relates to diversity. And all of these statements will describe an end result in 2025 of what, what people said, what we've heard so far, that Louisville should be like in 2025, that it should be a community that appeals to people of all ages, backgrounds, and interests. What's important about that is we're not looking at just one age group, just one type of housing choice, et cetera, but really looking at a lifelong set of choices. So when you think about Parks and Recreation, you see those facilities and activities for children, young adults, and seniors. We're not looking at this as just, here's another list of facilities, but we're looking at, how can those parks and recreation facilities help us achieve the kind of diversity that will draw people here and that will allow people to stay here throughout their whole lives? So diversity would be one of the four ideas that we would like. And obviously, it's not just about Parks and Recreation. You can see from these bullets, some other examples of the comments that we've heard that we think fit within this topic. Second idea is about growth, and obviously Louisville has enjoyed growth in the past. You're positioned, I think, from our analysis for further growth, which is good. But what we heard from people is, we don't want just more of the same old thing. We want Louisville to be a unique location, we want to be positioned for the 21st century jobs, and that also means the skill sets of the folks that are here, being able to succeed in those 21st century skills. So again, you see a list of items that this committee might look at that includes things like Old Town, for example, includes some of the more traditional economic development activities. But when you think about Parks and Recreation, one of the items here looks at ecotourism. And that's something where we think that Louisville has an advantage that many other communities do not have because of the lake. So we're looking at growth and how can we, how can we really take advantage of Louisville's unique characteristics and features? The third committee would be about connection, and again, the ideas that we heard is Louisville should offer choices so people can connect effectively and that those choices support the character that people want to see in Louisville. Part of this does relate to transportation issues and multimodal transportation, as you can see here, but part of it also relates to things like having that choice of being able to walk and bike. So this ties in with Parks Trail Planning work, not to reinvent it, but to look at it in terms of how it can help create connections and improve mobility for folks in this community in the future. The last of the four topics that we've identified is Resource Management, and the vision that we see here and that we heard from the community is that Louisville's natural assets and resources should be the foundation for a distinctive, desirable, and efficiently managed community. In other words, make the most use, the most efficient and effective use of the resources, which are, in a number of cases, are limited. So these are the kinds of things that we think this committee would look at. Again, if you think about Parks and Recreation activities, part of this looks at natural areas and open spaces, but one of the ideas here is, is one that the lake and its floodplain could become a green centerpiece for Louisville. Again, something that surrounding communities don't have the same opportunities that we think that you all do in terms of the character and of making it, making the most of those limited resources. So what we're suggesting in terms of the committees, we look at four topics that break down the traditional silos and give people a chance to really interact and engage in a way that's not going to be the same people on the same committee for the same thing that they did on the plan that they did two years ago. So what we want is to get that interaction of ideas and knowledge and expertise. Here are a quick summary of the logistics that we see for the committees. Our schedule is such that we, we see these committees working fairly quickly, fairly efficiently. This is not a process where they're going to go on for, for a long period of time. We envision that each committee would have about eight to 10 people, so altogether, there would be around 40 or so citizens that would be members of the different committees. We would hope that the city council would make appointments of folks who are interested in those committees. We have had things on the website and at all the meetings inviting people to send in applications, and if they're interested in serving, to send that information in and so, so that you have that background information about the people who have, have said that they're interested. And I think there's a good mix of people, and, and I think the staff has been pulling all of that together, so that you'll have a chance to, to look at that. We would hope that you all would appoint one person to be the leader of each of those committees, and then altogether, 40 people to participate on the committees. And since we think it's really important that there be this cross-disciplinary aspect to the committees, we're not really thinking that we should have all the same experts on each committee, but we'd rather that we would mix people up and, and appoint them almost in a random way across committees, because we think that nearly everybody is going to have expertise and value to contribute on each of these four issues that we've identified. We would hold the meetings in public locations, interested people from the community would be able to sit in on those meetings. This is not, you know, behind closed door kind of thing, we want to continue to engage the, the community throughout. I think it's important that committees like this have a clear idea of what they're supposed to be doing and what you're expecting that they will deliver in the way of, of work products. First, a vision statement, I showed you some draft vision statements already here, but committees might decide that they want to frame that, that idea in a different way than the headlines that you saw on the slides previously. We want them to identify the results, what are the things that we need to have accomplished by 2025 in this area, so that we know that we've moved ahead. And then some strategies or priorities about what are the important next steps to take. As I said, we want these committees to be pretty action-oriented and get beyond just the broad generalizations and really engage in coming up with some creative problems only. The schedule that we envision is the following, there would be a first initial meeting where all four of the committees would meet together, so that there could be some general discussion at the outset about the overall process, the input we've heard so far, of what you all are looking to see them do. And then each committee would meet in its own room, and we envision having this at, at the grand, so that it's easy to make those connections happen. We've identified the tasks that we would ask for each of the committees to do, discuss the research that's been done, agree on a vision, decide how they want to go about coming up with those results. The committees can really have a lot of flexibility about working meetings. Some committees may think they need to have several, some might just say, we only need one. It may vary from one committee to another. The committees might post information so that they can share, share research, and we're asking them to come up with those recommendations. Then there would be another all-committee meeting at the end of the process, where each of the committees would share with one another their vision, the results that they think need to have happen, and what their priorities are. So that would be the, the general flow, and as I said, that part in between, the committees would have quite a bit of flexibility of whether they want to have multiple meetings or not. We don't anticipate those meetings being staffed or having a lot of intensive support from the staff and consultants, but we would work with the committees to organize the locations that are publicly accessible. This is the timeline that we've identified. Obviously, today, we'd like your, we obviously are sharing the approach with you, and provide, I believe the, the staff will have the, the applications for you, the participants. We hope that you might make those appointments at the meeting on September 16th. Then during the months of October through December would be these committee meetings. We tentatively identify the date of October 15th for this all-committee kickoff session. They would continue to have those working meetings. And then in January, right after the holidays, we would plan to have a community charrette, an intensive effort with the results of the committee's work, the additional analysis that the consultants are doing, and really pull together those things that will then become the Louisville 2025.
Karen, I do think we got the October 15th date for the, for the, for the, for the empty, for all the rooms and everything, so we just thought that confirmed.
So we're, so we're set with, we're set with that, that schedule. So, so we're excited about the opportunity to continue working with the folks in the community. The interest and the creativity that we saw at the sessions that we've held so far is really strong, and I think it really makes this a very distinctive community. We want to continue building on that, but we want to do that in a way that's very focused and that really comes up with some good results of work products and not reinvent the wheel. So with that, I think, unless there's something I've forgotten about our approach, let me just open up the floor for further discussion or questions or comments.
Slide 13, slide 13, just want to make sure the council understands what you're recommending with your statement. I think it's clear, but just to be on the same side, what she's suggesting here is that you appoint one leader for, you actually name a person to be the leader of each committee. And then all the other members, you just appoint to the overall process, and then those members will be assigned to committees at random. That way, you don't have to actually pick and choose, that's one of the advantages, you don't have to say, this person for that committee, this person for this committee. It also provides, again, some of that across the committees.
We want to make sure that, for instance, people who've been involved in things like economic development, we need that kind of perspective on all four of the committees, so we don't want to have, you know, have all that get talked over.
But you could take that leader position and kind of focus that person in the area that you think.
You said you don't envision needing much staff support. A lot of the issues that come to the council, you know, month after month, are from citizens saying, why can't we have this, why don't we do this, why don't we fix this or improve that? But there's no understanding of what resources that would require, including financial resources. So from that perspective, for committee, committees to be making recommendations and especially be prioritizing them, I think they have to have some realistic understanding of the demands on resources and the reality of being able to fund items and so forth, and, and even funding opportunities that may be out there, for example, grants. So despite what you said about don't envision needing much staff support, it seems to me that each committee would need staff support or almost oversight on a somewhat routine basis to provide that input, because this is not knowledge that the committee members are likely to have. This is knowledge that the staff would, would definitely have or very probably have. It's unlikely they don't. So would you like to comment on that?
Sure. And, and when I said limited staff support, what I guess I was thinking about was just the issue of people coming to many meetings and sitting and taking notes and making copies of things and doing all of those kind of logistical support kind of things. But what, part of what we see happening in this first meeting, the initial all-committee meeting, is providing the kind of, exactly the kind of information that you're talking about. And we think that this can be done effectively at this session, because all the committees will be in one place to start with, and so we'll be able to provide that kind of information at the outset. We also expect that we'll be able to post things online, so if there's some informational background, for example, that, you know, information about grants or maybe, that that will be able to be posted. But really, part of this first meeting would be intended to provide a lot of that at the outset of the discussions. And so we're not saying that there, the staff will be sort of absent all the time, but we're trying to be very efficient about the use and using it in a way where the staff expertise is what gets used, as opposed to, you know, having lots of people having to, you know, check the sign sheets and write meetings and send things around.
I can assure you, we'll be part and parcel of the process, and we'll be involved in each committee to, not so much as oversight, but just to help them and guide them through the process. They're undoubtedly going to have questions and issues that crop up that only staff are in a position to provide information on, that's for sure. And so we're going to be available for all of that. We'll bring whatever resource we need. We don't have to spend more time, we'll spend more time.
Is there also a mechanism to create, create some, this is a related question, I suppose, to create some kind of cross-communication between committees, so that as one committee, for example, prioritizes its recommendations, and perhaps if we're going to assume that things at the top of the list quite often are the most expensive, that there's a reality about, you know, that's your number one, but we've got a number one over here, whose number one wins?
Right. And that's one of the reasons why those four people that are the leaders of the committees are, are going to be very important, because we anticipate having that interaction happening all along the way between those four people to start with, and then if they need to follow up, you know, one person, one of those chairs, the person who's chairing the group or leading the group about growth says, well, we better check this out with the, the one about connections, for instance, that they'll be that way for them to have that interaction. But we would really be looking at those, those four as being the, the very integral part of that kind of dialogue.
Again, because of staff's involvement, each of those committees will probably be able to see that type of thing developing as it occurs, as opposed to that tail end and say, well, I see you're talking about this, but I noted that the other committee was talking about the same exact issue over here, and so you can go ahead and talk about it and come up with what your recommendations are, but at some, at some point, those ideas will have to be reconciled.
Right.
Signed a priority one, this committee or that committee.
And, and some of those could very well create some synergy, too. It could be that the people that are thinking about 21st century economy are going to come up with something that's going to tie in with the resource management aspects of things, for instance.
That kind of answers my, what was going to be my third question, is what about where there's either overlap or conflict between recommendations, and how would that be resolved?
Well, you may have some unresolved conflicts. When there's overlap, I think it's going to be a lot easier to deal with.
Figure out how to deal with it.
When there's conflict, it might not be quite as easy, and it might work real strongly about this, and another committee has an idea that might be counterproductive to that, and we'll, we'll have to work through that as best we can, but it may wind up that you have some outstanding issues at the time that the council gets the draft document, and then you can work through it.
One of the other things that I mentioned on the schedule is this community charrette in January, and that is envisioned to be a process. A charrette is a very intensive working session, as, as I'm sure you all know. So if there are things that are conflicts or discrepancies that come out of the work of the committees, that will be another opportunity to really weigh those and look at the trade-offs before there's some kind of a draft that moves forward. So I see that as.
The other part is that, the previous slide, that all-committee meeting at the end is designed to kind of try to deal with some of those issues that might be outstanding at the final, final part of the process.
So it doesn't look like four different chapters?
You guys think this, and these guys think this, what do you want to come up with as a group?
One add that I would add, too, and we can utilize this as much as we want, but we have developed a website for the project. It's, it's, you know, very simple, it's linked to your homepage, but it's very easy for us to upload documents to that, so if we need to kind of create a bank of all the different committee ideas, so that you can see what others are working on, then that's a pretty simple thing that we can do to everybody to get to it.
Actually, I like that, but almost as much or more so that the committees can see what the other committees are working on.
Right, right. And that's mine, yeah.
And I'm not, and I don't, the thing you want to avoid, but I don't think this is a risk, is that everybody's looking over everybody else's shoulder trying to copy ideas or, you know, figure out the answer that they can't seem to figure out for themselves. You don't want to create that, but at the same time, I just think there's going to be both overlap and conflict, and, and so the question is, you know, how do we make best use of, of a limited amount of time and people, you know, not waste people's time and come up with a product that we can use?
And we really feel like having, having the committees intentionally interdisciplinary just kind of acknowledges that upfront, that these issues are connected to each other, they're related to one another, and, so we don't want to have, you know, the, the one group here that hasn't even given thought to these other consequences. So we feel like this is going to be a way to do that. Plus, I think it may be a way to engage some folks who, who've already served on committees and have been involved in plans in the past, but to get them engaged in a different way that they won't, aren't going to feel like, oh, no, we're doing the same thing all the time. Thanks.
Good question. Thank you very much.
I think the intent would be to get the appointments made on 16, 16th of the week. Want to serve as part of the process itself. I sent you some time ago a list of the current applicants, I don't know if we've had any before since then, but obviously it would be part of your backup material of the agenda on Thursday, so we'll see it again.
You might be prudent to send that before Thursday.
That's what I was sitting here thinking, it could be helpful.
Check that email out.
But you get updated recently?
If it's been updated, for sure.
Just go ahead and send it.
Okay, we'll send you a new one then.
She agreed to, yeah, I did it for next Thursday. I'm going to go ahead and move on to the regular workshop, I mean, to the regular agenda items on the workshop. We don't have a Boy Scout troop here tonight, do we? Like to do the pledge?
Okay.
Okay. I did talk to Councilman Vaughn earlier today, he is okay, he's just having a lot of difficulties, so that's, keep him in your prayers, he's kind of having a struggle here. I don't want a public hearing. I don't want a public hearing.
Can I just point out that we all have four votes, so if it passes, we can't do a bond emergency, and it'll have to be ready.
And that was a question on a couple things, we'll go through, you'll see. So is it better to, this is my question, is it better to just continue this to the next meeting where you next meeting where you would have four votes and then you only have, which is next week? Because if you don't, if you take the votes tonight, if it was to pass, you'd have to do two more readings versus one more meeting. See what I'm saying? Of course, however, you also run the risk of the next meeting not having it, or not having four-fifths vote.
But the next meeting is only a week away, so it's not a bad risk.
I understand that. So I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
It's probably your least of the risks.
That'd be on both of those, right? Both public hearings?
No, you can't, you have to have a public hearing as a first one.
Unless we don't have four people here, we wouldn't. That's right, you wouldn't have a meeting. Okay, so just the second one.
What if the property owner here doesn't want her delay?
Ask them.
But he's trying to save them if they have a delay.
I understand. But they are taking a risk. They are taking a risk. I agree with you.
I need to ask the property owners what they do. I agree with that. They'd rather go ahead and do it because they are taking risks.
Good question. Okay. Item three. Item four. Item five will need to pull. I'm going to abstain, so I guess, how do you deal with that? We cannot take any action on that. You only have three people when I abstain. That's not a quorum. Bang.
We still have a quorum over here.
No, we only got three people. Takes four to have a quorum.
Three from the works. Right, but he's going to walk out of the room instead of the other one.
Don't have a quorum. What was that the first time? Don't have a quorum. Four people have a quorum. So how do, I understand we can't act on it, but what do you do? Just say?
I'll let table it.
But you can't table it.
You can't do anything.
Yeah, you can't table it. That's right.
It'll just die.
It'll just die and we'll put down the next one.
So just approve it, if they want to approve it, with the exception of that item? Because this is considered, okay. All right. That was my, that's what I thought, but that was my question. Okay. On item eight, I'd like to pull and put that just in, have the city manager explain the agreement for Nika, either one. Go over the agreement and explain it.
Well, they are, that match will not be here, they will have to represent the manager.
Okay.
No, it doesn't have an emergency clause.
That was the other one I was going to ask you about, huh? It doesn't have to have a quorum.
It has to be read twice, so you can't parrot.
Okay. Item twelve.
Yeah, but I have the same problem here. I'm going to step out for this, so then you don't have a quorum.
Skip over item fourteen. You just skip over.
Well, let, well, let him.
Abstain and then move on.
It dies.
But you can't, can't do anything to it. It just dies. You can't table it.
You don't have a quorum. It's a follow-up.
And item fifteen. Bet you don't believe on this.
Anything else, Councilman? Steph?
Roger.
It is seven o'clock. We do have a quorum call, city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Councilman Durham and second is pledge of both American Texas flags led by Councilman Ferguson.
Would you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you.
First item on the agenda, or next item on the agenda, I should say, is the, is public hearing, consideration of proposed fiscal year 2013-14 budget, property tax revenue increase and property tax rate. In accordance with city charter and state law, a public hearing is being held on the proposed fiscal year 2013-14 budget. Property tax revenue increase and proposed property tax rate to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. The proposed fiscal year 2013-14 property tax rate is the same rate as the current tax rate. The proposed budget includes changes made by council at the budget workshop held on August 3, 2013. A public hearing was held on August 19, 2013. This is the second and final reading of public hearing. An agenda item to adopt the budget, property tax revenue increase and property tax rate will be on the September 16, 2013, city council meeting at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Did not have anyone fill out any cards, so we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item two is a public hearing, public hearing consideration of an ordinance for zone change request from general business and single-family residential to office district on .33 acres located at 411 Horn Drive, further identified as Highview Edition Lot 1 Block C as requested by Daniel and Carol Longacre, the property owners. Office district zoning is the most restrictive commercial zoning district. It allows for professional and administrative offices where only services are provided and no goods are offered for sale. Longacre Construction plans to relocate their main street office to this location. An engineering site plan would be required to convert the property to a commercial use. The planning zoning commission recommended approval of the zoning request by vote of 6-0 at their August 6, 2013 meeting. We have talked with the property owner and they have asked us to continue this public hearing until the next meeting, which will be next Monday night, the 16th, correct? Do I have a, I have to motion on that, no? Need a motion? A motion to, by Councilman Durham to continue the public hearing until the next meeting of September 16th and a second by Councilman Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is visitor citizen form, but this time any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Do not have any cards filled out and no one wish to speak. Next item is all of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests for a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I am asking that we pull item five and eight. Entertained motion for the consent agenda through exception of items five and eight?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Councilman Ferguson to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items five and eight. Second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, item five, I will be abstaining because I am in the insurance business.
How long do we do this?
Now that the mayor has left, we don't have a quorum, so we can't take a vote. So the item dies. I'll go get him. We can move on to the next item.
You missed a touchdown pass.
Item eight, approval of an economic development agreement between the city of Louisville and Prime Controls LP and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Prime Controls LP is an industrial automation and control system company that currently operates a facility at 815 Office Park Circle. The company is expanding and is purchasing a building at a new location in Louisville with a total value of $5,100,000 in real and business personal property. The proposed agreement provides a 50% tax incentive rebate on the total value of real and personal property for the, business personal property for the new location. Prime Controls LP will also promote Louisville as location in all media advertising and contribute $5,000 towards a city-sponsored event or program and maintain a continuous membership with this Louisville Chamber of Commerce. Recommendation is that council approve economic development agreement and authorize city manager to execute the contract. Mr. Management, either you or Nika, just kind of go over this agreement, please.
Let me just go over, I think, what the most pertinent part of this is, which is it's an existing Louisville business that you're offering an incentive to, to relocate, expand and purchase a new property and Lewis, and facility within Louisville. So when you hear about, you know, whether the city's doing enough with respect to retention, you can point to this. We do attempt to retain existing businesses to the extent that we can in Louisville, and this is a good example of that. Nika can go over the details, but you've kind of read those in the caption. Basically, they're making a $5.1 million investment and we're rebating or giving them an incentive of about $18,708 annually. Nika, you can give them the details on that.
Do staff need the rest of the detail, I mean, council need more details on that?
I don't know if you need more than that.
Okay. I just want to say, that's okay, Nika, that's good, but I do want to say thank you to staff and to Prime Controls for reaching out and making this possible to keep this good business here in Louisville, not only keep it here in Louisville, but to expand their business here in Louisville with the new buildings and such. So we want to thank that. Councilman Durham?
For the discussion, I move to approve as presented.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Durham.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nine is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code Section 6, 103, access, access management regarding access spacing requirements related to ACT construction located at 350 McDonald Street as requested by Jonathan Hack of Cross Engineering Consultants, Inc. on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a proposed .896 acre lot, zone light industrial. ACT construction is currently platting two lots in the Lamb Edition into one lot and expanding their existing building and site into the vacant lot on the west side of their existing business. Staff has reviewed and approved the engineering site plan for ACT construction, subject to the city council approval of the variance to allow both driveways on McDonald Street to about, to abut an existing driveway on an adjacent side in lieu of the required 50-foot spacing for driveways on the adjacent lots. Recommendation is that council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. I do have a card spelled out by Mr. Jonathan Hack. He is here to answer any questions. He's with Cross Engineering for Act Construction and he's here to answer any questions. If anyone had any questions. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I have no problems with this. Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Tierney and second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hack. Item 10 is consideration of a variance to Louisville City Code, Chapter 2, Section 2-201 regarding fees to refund building fees for the Christian Community Action Youth in Motion Project located at 121, 128 South Mill Street as requested by Mr. Ron Batts, President and CEO of Christian Community Action. Christian Community Action has redesigned their existing building from a retail store and donation drop-off facility into a retail store and children's learning center. Staff has reviewed their plans and has issued permits related to the project totaling $3,996. Permit fees were paid by Christian Community Action on August 1, 2013. Therefore, Christian Community Action is requesting a variance to refund building fees in the amount of $3,996. Recommendation is that council consider the requested variance as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Ferguson? Oh, I do have a card here by Mr. Rick Murray representing CCA and he is here also just to answer any questions if anyone has any.
If there's no questions, move to approve.
Have a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Ferguson. Second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Appreciate it. Consider items 11, consideration of an ordinance extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to CoServe Gas Limited. CoServe Gas franchise was, franchise with the city of Louisville expired on March 2, 2013. It has been the city's practice to extend the term of the prior franchise until a new franchise is prepared and executed. Staff is requesting an extension of the current franchise ordinance until February 28, 2014. The proposed ordinance provides for the continuation of the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3087-07-2004 pending the execution of a new franchise. The city of Louisville charter requires two readings of this order, ordinance within 30 days, with 30 days in between. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance and conduct the first reading. Councilman Durham?
Presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Durham to approve as presented and second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion?
Mary?
Don't you?
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to CoServe Gas Limited and providing an effective date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of a variance of the Louisville City Code, Section 2-201, fee schedule regarding a waiver of the Lake Park day use entry fee. Mr. Dan Harrod of Mustang Sally Productions has volunteered his services to the Lake City Storm, a Texas Special Olympics group made up of boys and girls that live in the greater Louisville area, to produce a benefit car show. All proceeds for the car show will benefit the Lake City Storm Special Olympics team. The car show is scheduled for Saturday, October 5, 2013, and is expected to have approximately 100 show cars. Mr. Harrod is requesting waiver of the park entry fee for our car owners and all individuals supporting the Special Olympics fundraiser. Recommendation of staff is recommendation that the council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above and require the sponsoring parties to meet the city's standard liability insurance requirements. Councilman Tierney?
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented.
Second.
So that would be with the liability insurance and a second by Councilman Ferguson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Motion carries. Item 13 is consideration of appointing an alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council. Mayor Protem Lee Roy Von was nominated by city council on November 5, 2013 to serve as the city's alternate representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Emergency Preparedness Planning Council. When the city's preparedness was no longer, representative was no longer serving as a city council member, Mayor Protem Von moved into the representative position. This council is composed of elected officials from participating cities and counties. Cities are grouped into population brackets in accordance with current population estimates. City council needs to consider an alternative, an alternate representative to fill in for the representative, Mr. Von, if needed. Reputation is council consider the nomination for the alternate position. Which one of you find gentlemen would like to serve?
I would like to nominate TJ Gilmore.
Second. We have a motion. I love it. We have a motion by Councilman Tierney to nominate Mr. TJ Gilmore, a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consideration of a, item 14, consideration of a fee waiver request in the amount of $308 for use of MCL Grand as requested by Lewisville Lake Symphony. Lewisville Lake Symphony has booked the performance hall at MCL Grand for its 2013-14 season. The symphony has submitted a request to council to waive rental fees for the recital hall for reception planned in connection with one of these performances projected rental costs for the proposed reception are $308, there is no provision in the fee schedule for staff to waive rental fees for an event at MCL Grand.
Mayor, I don't receive any financial compensation from this organization, however, I do chair this organization, so I'm gonna step out for this discussion.
Abstain?
Mayor, we've lost a quorum, so we can't conduct any business.
Okay. Would you have Mr. Ferguson come back in, please? Item 15 is consideration of an odor abatement program in Old Town Lewisville as requested by myself. Occasional sewer odors, I'm gonna say more than occasional, numerous sewer odors are occurring in Old Town on different occasions. Several investigations have been performed seeking the source of odors. Studies have been done and conducted in the last several years on this. We are doing an installation of odor control equipment, is included in the fiscal year 2013-14 budget at a cost of $2.7 million. Completion of this project is planned by summer 2015. Additional abatement items may also be considered by council as outlined in the staff memorandum. I put this on here, on the agenda, because I've been getting dozens of phone calls about the odor here in Old Town. It's not just Old Town, it's basically the east side, all the way north out to the lake, and I've noticed myself, called staff about it several times myself. Unfortunately, we could not get the company that we are looking at contracted, we have not, have we actually contracted with them yet?
We've, this is the company, I think you're referring to the RGAN Group?
Yes.
They've done the previous studies. We've actually contracted with them previously to do the studies that resulted in the capital project that's in your budget.
Okay. And we had some, I had some questions for them tonight, and unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight, so my recommendation is to table this item to the next meeting. They can be here, have assured us they could have somebody here next week. And my thing on this is, Mr. Assistant City Manager, Mr. Backus, has given you some backup and a slide presentation that you can kind of be looking at between now and next week. My thing is, looking at is there any possible ways, if council wants to, to try to move this product, move this forward a little bit quicker than two years? Because what we're looking at now is summer of 2015, and so I don't know if it's available, but if we could, and if council so wanted to, we might could look at doing that, because I know there are a lot of people in the city. Plus, whether it's trying to revitalize the downtown area here in Old Town, it's gonna be tough to do with something like that hanging over our heads, so. So with my recommendation, we table this till the next meeting where we can get the consultant here to look at this, or ask questions and stuff. Have a motion to table by Councilman Tierney?
Till the next.
Till the next meeting.
Don't we need a date, actually put a date? September 16th?
September 16th, next meeting. Is that your motion? Have a motion by Councilman Tierney?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
I had a hard time hearing you.
Okay. We're down to reports. Nika? Chief, anything? Okay. Y'all got a big open house coming up, right? I forget the date. October what? October 5th. Great, we'll remind everybody of that again next week. That's always a good event for, have a big turnout, I always appreciate y'all doing that. Linda? She Carbo?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick word, earlier under the consent agenda, you approved the speed enforcement grant, which I know that we've seen that a lot over the years, the last 15 or so years we've done that, but just as a word, those things do make a difference, the support that we get from the council and city staff to do those sorts of things, that over the course of time, we've actually worked ourselves out of three locations that the state targeted for enforcement. So that means we are making a difference, and to your support, Lewisville's a much safer place to drive.
Great, thank you, and thank all of your team members for all the work they do each and every day, we appreciate it. And you and your team members will also, or some of your team members will also be at the open house at Central Fire Station on the 5th, right?
Yes, fire department's pretty kind to give us space there to show some of our toys, so we'll certainly be there with them.
Thank you, sir. Carol, how you doing tonight, ma'am?
I'm fine. Don't have anything to report. What we're doing is watering the lake and those kind of things, it's no good news, we're probably down about another foot. It's been, oh, probably two and a half years since we've been this low.
Right. I do just want to encourage everyone to please be safe out there, there, I hear every week, somebody's talking about how they were out there, or, and I'm sure our fire department can attest this too, it's the safety out there, there are stumps that you've never seen before, there's things sticking up in the water because the lake is so low, so everybody please be careful out there. Donna? Tell Mr. Ferris our thoughts and wishes are with him tonight, if you will, appreciate it, thank you. Ms. Backus?
No.
Rudy?
Mayor, I know our water restrictions have expired on the time that we had put out there. We're still not in a good situation. Just want to remind everybody, if they can, still try to limit their usage of outdoor watering, and I guess, continue, continue the same pattern?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You bet, Rudy, and I agree with you on that, it's, I had forgotten to run out, I've just kept mine on there, and I have to say, I've done it, and I split some of the time in the morning and some in the afternoon on my trash days, and so it kind of gets watered twice, but I will say this, I got my water bill, I use less water this August than I did last August, because it shows you the 12 months prior to, so work, and my yard's still pretty much green, it's got some brown spots, but it's doing well, so it can, it can work. Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Mr. King?
Along the lines of what you just referenced, Carol and the finance staff will be doing some evaluation of that 60-day restriction period and see what kind of consumption patterns we experience compared to prior years, and hopefully we can make some conclusions with respect to effectiveness for too much longer, I know she's already working on that, so we should have some kind of a report for you within next month on how that worked. Secondly, on the item that we talked about on the odor abatement, I referenced RJM, they were the first consultant that we used, and you may have been referring to the second consultant, which is Perkins, they're the ones that we're contracting for to do the actual design of the capital project, and I think it's Perkins that was unavailable tonight, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Ferris?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to thank everyone who inquired about my daughter, she's doing pretty well, she did suffer some injuries in what was sort of a one-car accident that was not her fault, and in fact, there were fortunately witnesses and had cell phones, and they tracked down the other driver, and apparently he was cited for a list of things, but car was totaled, and it was kind of scary, but she's back in school, and so I appreciate all of y'all's thoughts and concerns on that. We've got MCL Grand stuff coming up in the next couple of weeks, Great American Honky Tonk Review, Saturday, September 14th, and again, Saturday, September 21st, a total of four shows presented by Our Productions Theater Company. Lewisville Lake Symphony is starting its 30th season with claimed Chinese double bassist Yang Haron, that's on September 20th. We have a town hall meeting for State Rep. Simmons on September 18th, and of course, the Visual Arts League always has their acoustic Friday Jam, 7:00 PM in the art gallery, and that's free. There's an art exhibit, the Cross Timbers Artist Guild Show will be in the Grand Gallery from, started on August 17th, will be there through September 21st, and the gallery's open Tuesday through Saturday, 1 to 5, and also during any public performances, the gallery's always open, so, and that's free. And that's it, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Olivia, thank you so much for being here tonight, and you've done a wonderful job in filling in, we appreciate your work that you've done, ma'am. Also, once again, we appreciate you being here, and we appreciate everything you do each and every day, sir. If you'll pass that on to your fellow coworkers, I appreciate that too. Thank you, sir. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition, Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we will now convene Convene back into regular session, is reaction be taken, counsel?
Move to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Durham, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.